The Oates Parish School Board Meeting, come any time that your schedule will allow. Ms. Mekus, call roll, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May, here. Mr. Wagner. Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Stand, please, for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Confirmation, Mr. Bobby Jones.
Father, we just thank you for this, Father. Father, we just ask you to be with and guide our forefathers, your name. Father, we ask you to continue to bless our students and our fathers. I pray, Lord Father, to continue to watch over us and keep us safe. Father, I just want to pray for the time of years we have right now, Lord Father. When I put my name before my father. Father, we just want to pray for our good forefathers to keep us safe and allowed to meet and play in like this. Father, we just, again, we just ask you blessings, Lord Father, in this meeting. We ask you to be with and guide our forefathers, our board members. What I just prayed is just that you keep watch over us. And I thank you so much, our leadership, our superintendent, our administrators, our teachers, and all of our faculty, Lord Father, and all those that keep the school healthy. Father, again, we're just so grateful for your blessing, we ask you to continue to do this.
Yeah. We'll look down to the approval of the minutes, November the ninth, 2021, December the seventh, 2021.
I so move that we approve the minutes.
A second. Motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, November the ninth, 2021. Approval of the agenda. I need to amend the agenda and delete item number three. So we need to amend the agenda, delete item number three.
So move.
Second. Okay. We got a motion in a second? Okay. Any comment from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Need a motion in a second to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? Or the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Special recognitions? We have none?
We do.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Hattley.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Ma'am.
We're excited today to recognize one of our great students. I'll tell you about the Garden Club. The Garden Club at Swartz Upper Elementary is 145 students strong, so that's pretty awesome. It's led by teacher Brandy Smith, who is with us as well. Each year, they learn about plants and grow in healthy food. And there's a company, Bonnie Plants, y'all are probably familiar with them. They have a program called the Third Grade Cabbage Program. Students receive seeds along with growing instructions, and then they're encouraged to grow their vegetables, grow their cabbage, and send in pictures. And there's actually a contest throughout the whole state. And our honoree today, Ms. Emma Vedrine. Ms. Emma, you want to come up? Dr. Coker, would you like to come down? She's actually in the fourth grade now, but she grew her cabbage and won for the state of Louisiana as a third grader. So we have some pictures to show you of Emma Vedrine.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow.
So the program picks a winner in each state, and she was the winner for Louisiana. She will get a $1,000 scholarship when she goes off to college from Bonnie Plants. Her mom teaches at Swartz as well. She's joined today by her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Vedrine. Do you guys want to come up? I know you. And her teacher, Ms. Smith. I told her she could come up if she wanted to. And of course, their principal is here, Ms. Maxwell. So we are super proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hattley. Moving down to item number two, consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution providing for canvassing, the returns, and declaring the results of the special election held in the East Washita Parish School District on the parish of Washita, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, December 11th, 2021, to authorize and incur an of debt and insurance of bonds therewith. Ms. Mekus.
You have in your packet a resolution to canvass the results of the election from Saturday, December the 11th for the East Washita Parish School Board District, bonding district. The results were favorable, the bond issue did pass. So does anyone have any questions?
We have a motion in a second to accept the resolution on the bond issue.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience?
Morning, board. Tiffany Hatton, parent choice LA. I'm thankful that the bond issuance is on the agenda because I've been wanting to educate you all about the bonds that you all hold as public officials. Most of you were backed and appointed to your seat probably under the appeal of traditional, the traditional mentality, meaning you vote the way you do and everything because this is how it's done. This is how it's always been. Well, public elected officials are required in the U.S. to have surety bonds that are specifically attached for honesty of office and faith performance bonds. So I wanted to just read some things to you because maybe you don't know this. I know I didn't. The bond is one of the oldest forms of written guarantee that requires persons to obtain quality for office. In 1792, Congress passed an act that the office of the paymaster shall give bond in the sum of $20,000 with two sufficient sureties for the faithful discharge of duties. So depending on the statutes of a specific jurisdiction, public official bonds may be faithful performance bonds, fidelity bonds, public employee dishonesty bonds, or public employee blanket bonds. So to clarify, that means that you all who hold public official capacity are bonded and carry individual liability insurance. So if you're acting capacity as a public official, if you cause wrong or harm, we, the people, do have recourse and can hold you accountable and do have to, and we don't have to wait for another election year. So I went on the, you know, the CAPS system where everything is posted for the public to view. And I just wanted to read to y'all the bonded member section under the file BBBD. So the Washita Parish School Board shall require the superintendent and school board president and other appropriate designated personnel who are authorized to sign all checks written against school funds to furnish a surety bond of not less than $15,000. In addition, the superintendent, as treasurer of the school board, shall furnish an indemnity bond made in favor of the governor and the school board in an amount to be set by the board. All bonds shall be purchased by the school board from a company licensed to do business in Louisiana. In addition, all bonds purchased by the school board on its employees shall include coverage against loss sustained by the school board through fraudulent or dishonest acts committed by any of the bonded employees or persons. So, and it lists the Louisiana Revised Statutes 1795 and 1797. So the first point, where you are now, you're in office and with a proper surety bond required by law. The second point is where you will be when I and other parents file complaints against these bonds for deprivation of rights under the color of law. A handful of claims to your bond company will make your bond company cancel you, okay? Because, you know, it's just business, nothing more. But we've seen with the money situation, with the Esther funds, that people are doing strange things whenever it comes to money. So in collaboration with your bond insurer and adjuster, of course, they are interested in claims made on behalf of taxpayers, parents, employees, and all those things. So how that works is, is whenever the claims are filed, it goes straight to the insurer. Once a claim is filed, it's investigated, it never goes away. It is permanent, and it can cause a lot of recourse. So if your bond is set at 20 grand, superintendent would be 50 grand, president would be 50 grand. So if a claim comes in from a parent of medical damage, psychological damage, socialization damage exceeding, I mean, it really is up to them, like $1.3 million in damages for one individual complaint, and you only have coverage of five grand, 10 grand, 20 grand, or 50 grand, that insurer, whenever they get five to 10 complaints coming in at that amount, they're either going to pull their bond, drop your bond, or they are going to pay what their, what your bond is for, or they are going to have you personally liable. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention because I, you know, I never knew this. I wasn't taught this, and I don't know that y'all knew it either. So I just wanted to bring that forward to y'all's attention.
Three minutes is up. Thank you, though.
Okay, I would like to point out that this is, that is not the type of bonds we're discussing. These bonds are to incur debt and issue bonds not exceeding $20 million in one or more series to run not exceeding 20 years at a rate not exceeding 8% for the purpose of acquiring and improving lands for building sites, playgrounds, including construction of necessary sidewalks and streets adjacent to purchasing, erecting, and improving school buildings and other school-related facilities for the district, including to the extent feasible to those school-specific projects. In the capital improvements plan approved, therefore, titled to which shall be in the public, which bonds will be general obligations of the district payable from Avalorum taxes levied and collected in the manner approved by Article 6, Section 33 of the Constitution of the State of Louisiana of 1974, and statutory authority of supplemental thereto, with no estimated increase in the millage rate to be levied in the first issue of the above 36 mills currently being levied to pay the general obligation bonds of the district. And this is for the East Washita Parish School District proposition.
Any more discussion from the audience? From the board? Roll call vote, Ms. Mekus, please.
Mr. Como.
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner? Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving down to item number four, approval of job description, Mr. Todd Gass.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Board, as you know, I come to you from time to time and just ask you to approve job descriptions that are in our personnel evaluation plan. This is the plan that you approved some months ago, and we work really hard to keep our job descriptions current. So these are two that you have in your packet that we emailed out for the technical coordinator and help desk coordinator. Positions we already have, we're just refining these job descriptions, no more than that.
We have a motion to accept, in a second, to accept these job descriptions?
So these are already in place, and then we're just...
Right, these positions are already in place, and it's just an effort to continue to clean these up.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I so move that we approve these job descriptions, these two.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Moving down to item number five, approval of the extended COVID leave, Mr. Gass.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Board, if you remember back in August, we came to you with a COVID leave plan. It was labeled or titled 2021 COVID Leave. It expires December the 31st. So I just bring you this and asking you to extend that from January 1, 2022 to June 30, 2022. There are no changes to what you approved in August. It's just an extension of the current COVID leave that we have. I will make a note, Mr. Noah rightfully pointed out in bullet two, that should read 2022 COVID Leave instead of 2021. We'll clean that up before it goes out to the schools if you approve. So it's just a continuation of what we've already been doing for the first semester.
I motion in a second to approve the COVID Leave 2022.
I so move with the anticipated change of the date, the year date in bullet number two.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Moving down to item number six, financial report for October 31, 2021, Ms. Mekus.
You have in your packets the financial report, but report for the fiscal year ended period, October 31, 2021. I might read the whole report to you, but just point out a few items. In the general fund, we are operating as compared to the prior year at 99.74%. We are right on target with our budget for the current year, ending the period with the fund balance of $29,66,000. In District One, M and O, we're a little above the prior year. This is a direct correlation to the increase in sales tax that we've seen recently for the current year-to-date. We are up 15% on our sales taxes as they continue to increase over the prior years. You'll see the 1968 and the 1995 sales taxes, that's our 13th and 14th checks. We're running at 115, 133% of where we were last year. So those are in direct correlation to the increase of 15% in sales tax. If you'll look to the third page, on the second column from the end, that's our East Washita Bond Construction for 2020. Just wanted to point out where we are as we have bid items for today. Look at rebidding the Sterlington Middle School, asking for approval. And we will be monitoring this budget. We issued $21,795,000 of the $42 million authorized from the 2020 year. So as we go into the construction of the new middle school, we will look at authorizing the remaining $20 million on that original issue. And then, of course, for the inflation that we're expecting to see on the construction projects, the inflation that we've seen on the construction projects that we've opened to date, the $20 million that was approved by the voters this past weekend will continue that effort in construction for the east side.
We have a motion in a second to...
You want to call a question?
What?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'll answer questions whenever I get there. Yeah, a motion in a second to approve the financial report, October 31, 2021.
I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
On the $20 million
Yes.
bond that was just approved last Saturday, are we going to let all $20 million at one time, or will that be in increments?
The plan for that is to do it in increments as it's needed, if it's needed. Because if you'll recall, the original plan for the east side bond issue was done prior to COVID.
Yeah.
Prior to the increases, all the inflation we've seen in construction costs. So whenever the voters did approve it in May of 2020, then we proceeded with construction in the first several, the first three actual construction bids that were open were quite a bit more. So we went back to the voters for authorization for an additional $20 million and basically for direction and guidance from them to see, did they want us to continue on with the list as is with the increased construction cost? Or did we need to revisit the list? And the voters did approve for us to continue on with the list. So we will only issue that as needed in increments as we go forward. But the plan, the next issue we'll have will be the remaining $20 million from the original 42.
Do you know the timeline on that, Regina?
We don't have a definite timeline set, but we're looking at March.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Grant Sluter, and we'll be also involving Namdi Thompson, our financial advisor, along with our bonding attorney. And we'll be meeting to try to put together that timeline on the direction we're going to go with the projects.
Any more questions from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No? Motion carries. Moving down to number seven, consideration of approval of the 2023 redistricting plan, Mr. Doug Mitchell and Mr. Elmanoa.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for having me here today. As presented at the last meeting, Plans One, Plan Two, and Plan Three. I'd like to briefly, briefly go over the numbers. If you recall, the 2010 plan compared with the 2020 data, right of deviation, 14.2%. And that's District C and District E. The parish gained 7,761 total people from 2010 to 2020, from 104,905 people to 112,666. So the process that we go through with redistricting is take your current plan, use the data that is presented by the Census Bureau using the PL 94171 data by law. And our first attempt, Plan One, we're at 13.15% deviation. District Two, we're at 10.18. And, I'm sorry, Plan Two. And Plan Three, we're at 8.4. You try to get your plans at 10% or below unless you have a good reason to let it go a little bit higher. Reason for that is you want the districts to be equal in representation, one person, one vote. Second rule is to look at the racial breakdown to make sure your districts are reflective of the population. And the first plan, Plan One, the attempt there was to adjust the population loss that you see. And it's really not a loss outside of the fact that you gain population. So it varied across the parish. District D is at a negative 7% deviation, D is a negative 6, B's 5.77, C's 6.87, and F is 5.49. So when you start moving people around, District E gained population by moving the line up from the existing line in West Monroe to gain population. And that's what's reflected on Plan One to get it into deviation. And Plan Two is an attempt to address the racial breakdown with District F and G. So there's no difference between Plan Two, Plan Three on Districts F and G. The other big change on Plan Two, and we're using whole precincts at this point, in moving a precinct from District C into D. And there's, you know, a law that the Secretary of State monitors and has in place that we're technically supposed to use whole precincts when we redistrict or re-apportion. And in this case, we're moving a whole precinct out of C into D to get those two districts into deviation. And the whole precinct move does that. So I present to you Plans One, Two, and Three for your determination. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. I'll do it to the best of my ability.
That's Plan One on the video screen.
This is the existing plan. And if you allow me to sit over here, and you look at the plans, it's really hard to really see the difference in any of the, this is Plan One. There are very, very minor changes. It's split the precinct here inside of West Monroe. We moved the line from Stella Street up to Haynes, it's where the precinct. So that's something the Secretary of State will have to review. That's on Plan One. If you notice this precinct out on the west side, it's right in this area here. I'll turn it over and you can see it. Bear with me. This precinct, Ripken Road, Linfield Road, Highway 546 of the US 80, from background, this precinct would be moved into District D. That would bounce. Over here, we're splitting two precincts between G and F and bringing the population of District F up to 39. This is Plan Two. Close this one out, we'll hear Plan Two now. This is what the big change is. And it's the same on Plan Two and Plan Three between the two districts. When you look at these two, it addresses the representation for blacks, 49% in District D. Now, Plan Three was an attempt to look to see if you could cross the river with District D, to possibly go in the way on stand-by graphic package, Highway 34, down in this area. Numbers on that plan, it just did not address it, it actually weakens District D. And I believe if you weaken District D, you're opening yourself to potential suits. So I think we've addressed those two issues with Plan Two and Plan Three.
Does the board have a district in this lineup from one to three that you want to recommend? Make a motion on?
I move approve this, uh, Plan Two.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? Yeah, roll call vote, Ms. Mekus.
Mr. Como.
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Also, in, on your desk, as part of this agenda item, there is a, now that the board has approved Plan Two, there is a resolution that accompanies that approval that the board needs, needs to approve, basically for purposes of forwarding this to the Secretary of State's office to confirm that Plan Two was approved. Again, each board member has a copy of this resolution. I can, I can read it for you, and again, it would require roll call vote. It just affirms what the board just did. It says, "A resolution to comply with LSARs 1771.4 and 1771.5, reenforcement of school board districts..." board districts required after each decennial census, whereas the reapportionment of school board districts is required after each decennial census. And whereas the Washita Fair School Board contains seven districts from which school board members are elected and shall lead certain terms of office of four years. And whereas the Washita Fair School Board is governed by Louisiana revised statutes, and whereas such reapportionment plans must meet all state and federal requirements. And whereas the Washita Fair School Board members have examined the current reapportionment plan with the assistance of fully qualified demographers and planners, and have determined that the school board should redistrict its election districts based upon the 2020 federal census. And whereas the Washita Fair School Board has redistricted as provided herein, now therefore be it resolved by the Washita Fair School Board in legal session convened on the 14th day of December 2021 at 12:00 PM, that henceforth, the Washita Fair School Board shall be composed of seven members, one to be elected from each election district. The election districts are as described in Plan Number Two, so that Number Two should be completed there for the board's vote, with the next regular election date to be held on November the 8th, 2022, the effective date of this resolution being the 14th day of December 2021. And so, consistent with the board's vote to approve Plan Two, there needs to be a motion approving this resolution, seconding it, and the board needs to vote. And again, the purpose of this, this resolution, and Mr. Mitchell is familiar that the state statute requires the submission of this resolution to Louisiana Secretary of State's office. And Mr. Mitchell is preparing the submission that will go to the Secretary of State's office. So, basically, we need a motion in a second to approve this resolution.
We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
I so move that we approve the resolution.
A second. Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Roll call.
Yeah, I'm a roll call. Ms. Mekus, roll call, please.
Mr. Como?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Okay.
There's my signature here. Did you use that?
Moving down to item number eight, consideration approval of amendment of the Calhoun Civic Club endeavor, corporate endeavor agreement, with Scotty Wagner and Mr. Foy Gadberry. Honorable Foy Gadberry.
And the previous meetings?
Previous meetings, we extended the lease on the property behind the Calhoun elementary school to the Calhoun Civic Club, but there was some property that was assumed that was in the lease, so we needed to clean that up to get it to where it was into the lease so that some of the park plans could be extended. And I appreciate Mr. Foy Gadberry for really stepping up and helping out the Civic Club with that. So, with that, I'll leave it him to explain further what happened.
Good afternoon, board members. Foy Gadberry, I'm a member of the Calhoun Civic Club, along with Scotty, and they asked me to prepare a legal description and plat of the actual corporate endeavor lease. I also included a pictorial because I didn't figure you could read a legal description and know exactly where that piece of property was. So, the pictorial depicts where that legal description fits on the ground so that you can kind of see where that occurs at. So, I hope that you consider it and approve it. I'll take any questions if you may.
We have a motion to accept the amendment of the Calhoun Civic Club corporate endeavor agreement?
I move we accept the motion to extend the corporate endeavor agreement, the Calhoun Civic Club.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Is this similar to what we ordered on a few months ago?
There was some outlining property that was not part of the original lease?
Right.
That actually was found.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's just making the whole agreement before we make it explain it.
If you're looking at that pictorial burial photograph, the wooded area that's on the west side of the property, that's the property that was in question.
You'll see it outlined in red there. We're just extending some of that property for them to be able to use.
I think the previous agreement didn't include that little strip there, so we cleaned that up.
It's property that's actually been used anyway. It just wasn't listed in the legal description of the previous lease.
Any more questions from the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number nine, liquidated damages at Sturington High School, Mr. Bobby Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, board members. This past summer, we put a new track in at Sturington High School, and in the contract, it indicated that the track was supposed to be completed by August 1st. Will do some, to some extenuating circumstances, one being a striking plan that was not approved in time, another that the materials for the track itself had not arrived. The contractor did not actually finish the job till August 23rd. According to the paperwork I have, in the contract, there were six rain days for June, six rain days for July. Those were not used. And also, the contractor did work around the football team during the summer, and even though they were actually finished with the track on the 11th of August, they actually came back on the 23rd. So, it was just a little mix of things that caused them to be delayed. I did talk to Principal Thompson at the school, and he said that the school did not incur any harm. There was no out-of-pocket expenses for the track to be late. And so, at this time, board members, I would like to waive these liquidated damages for the track at Sturington High School.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to waive the liquidated damages?
I move we waive the liquidated damages explained by Mr. Jones.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Basic carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Thank you, board member.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Moving down to item number 10, construction renovation report, Mr. Slusher?
Mr. Hicks, board member, we had our meeting at Bowley this morning at 9:00. We were, even though it was real wet and muddy, we got to tour the building, and it looks real good. I encourage you to, next time we have a meeting, come out and look at it. They really don't want outsiders coming in when they're working and everything, but you're more than welcome to, you know, call and tell them you want to come, and they'll be glad to accommodate you if you can't make the meeting on the second Tuesday of every month. We met on Woodlong and have discussed the payments that are requested by the contractor. We're working with the architect now to try to come up with a figure for the liquidated damages. I don't have that figure with me today, but hopefully by the next board meeting, I will have it. And that's on Woodlong. That's all I have. We're, we've got the West Washita, and it's moving along real fast. Mayfield Construction is doing a real good job out there so far, and we, I think, as soon as, I mean, as early as it is, I still think he's had a schedule, but he jumped right in and started working. I'll answer any questions if y'all have any.
We're still waiting on the punch list items at Woodlong Junior High?
Yes. Yeah, they, we've got a punch list from the architect and from the principal, and as you know, you've been out there, and I have too, they hadn't been working on the punch list at all. And of course, that will be taken into consideration also.
Is there any anticipated material delay orders on West Washita?
No. No. West Washita looks like he's going to be able to secure the materials he needs, and the only thing that might hold him up a little bit is some of the roofing material, because that's been delayed three or four months at least. So, but he can put up a temporary roof, you know, roofing until he gets the regular roof, and so it won't leak enough.
I go by regular. They've made progress.
I'm real glad. He's done, he's done work for us before, but he's doing a real good job so far.
Moving forward on the track for the ROTC at West Monroe High School?
Yes, sir. Yes, so Lhasby designed it, and he's in the process of getting three quotes to do the asphalt.
Any update on where we're at on finishing the roof at Washita? I know I keep asking that every meeting.
I tell you, like I told you last meeting, he promised by Christmas it'd be finished.
He's real close. I was out there this week. He's real close.
January meeting, we should get affirmative that that roof is completed.
That's right.
Here. He's close. He's real close.
Okay. Thank you, Kent. Moving down to item number 11. We're going to go, we're going to go past item number 11 and go down to valuation of bids and permission to bid, if, so I need a motion in a second on the valuation of bids, Mr. Bobby Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, board members. We'll start with the first one here. The storm damage that we had from the ice storm back in February, we're finally getting ready to get going with that. I do want to read into the record that the budget for this item was $783,500. And at this time, I'd like to recommend the low bid of southern roofing and vinyl of $830,000. Should have a bid tab in your folder.
Okay.
And... And also approve add-on number one, that is to build a better awning at West Ridge Middle School. That awning actually collapsed, like both of them actually collapsed from the weight of the ice, and we're going to rebuild it similar to the one at Good Hope. So, it won't, it should not fail again. So, I'll make that recommendation at this time.
Okay, that's item number one.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hicks?
The valuation of the bids, that's item number one?
Yes, sir. 16, I'm sorry, yes, sir. 1622 storm damage district-wide.
We have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Any comments from the audience? From the board?
Bobby, that's $783,500.
That was the budget amount, $783,500.
What's the actual?
The actual was $830,000, so wasn't too far off. That's hopefully a good sign for us.
There's only two bidders?
Two bidders, yeah. The government was a little bit high.
Any more discussion from the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number two?
Yes, Ms. Hicks, portable tracks and trikes. And I'll try not to get this confused, but the bidder actually got the, there's two bid items. I had one bidder. The bidder actually flipped the two items. So, the trikes were first, the track was second, and they flipped them when they submitted the bid. So, the bidder has agreed to provide the trikes at a price of $248, which would be for bid item one. And bid item two, they were withdrawing their bid because they made an error in the math. So, at this time, I'd like to recommend AAA State of Play for bid item one only at a bid price of $248.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve this?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
What is a trike and a track? What is a track and a track?
A track? It's just, it's a little portable track that goes around the playground. They ride the tricycles on it.
We just ordered, how many?
We're going to order 70 trucks.
70?
Yes.
I'm thinking this is for our preschool kids and maybe kindergarten, but preschool mostly.
Yeah. Being paid for with Title I fund. It should be going at some of the Title I schools.
Any more discussion from the board?
S of fund, S of two.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, S is correct. S is correct.
Any more discussion from the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Thank you, board. We got one, a couple more here.
Moving down to item number three, Chiller and West Monroe High School Fieldhouse.
Yes, sir. We received two bids to replace the Chiller at the Fieldhouse at West Monroe High School, and recommendation is to accept a bid for Mechanical Concepts of $56,504.14.
We have a motion to accept it, to accept this bid?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. I don't know before, Ag Science Equipment?
Yes, Ms. Hicks, I'd like to table that. I had to move that bid opening. We had an addendum out. It was not returned, so I'd like to table that on.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to table this item?
So move.
So move.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Permission to bid?
Okay, you want to, we're going to take these all at one time?
Take them all at one time, Mr. Jones.
Okay, so the first item is the new construction at Sturington Middle School. I'd like to read into the record that the budget for that school is $25 million. The next item are trucks and vans. That's for the school system for maintenance and IT tech support, some touchless bottle fillers which will be put up at the school so the students won't have to deal with water fountains. The next item are Chromebook cases. We purchased a lot of Chromebooks this last year, so we're going to get cases for those to help protect them. The air filter, which we were hoping we were going to get a rollover on that one, but the prices on air filters are going up, so we're going to have to rebid that. And then the last item are some education resources, and that's being paid for through Title I. The other items are listed as such.
We have a motion to accept it, to put these items out to bid one through six?
I so move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Bobby, I assume the bid opening will be prior to the next board meeting on the Sturington High School, Middle School, Sturington Middle School?
I'm trying to remember, Mr. Manley, what the date is on there. It's advertising starting this Thursday, so it's probably going to be around the 16th, 17th of January when that opens.
So, we might want to try to do our board meeting.
The next board meeting, Mr. Hicks, I don't want to stir your thunder here, but it's going to be on the 18th of January because of the holidays and being able to come back.
So, that would give us enough time to get the bids opened up prior to the meeting.
Great.
I believe we're going to be in front of that.
Okay, good.
What time would it be? Oh, you'll tell them better.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, no problem at all. Any discussion from the board? On favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Thank you, board member.
Moving back down to item number 11, consider and approve executive session pursuant to LASRS 4217. Need a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Yeah, I know that. I'm trying to figure out. I'm going to let them have a discussion about it, just if they want to go back. Any discussion from the audience? Okay. Need a roll call vote, Ms. Mekus?
Mr. Como?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes. Now, we will be in executive session for, who knows, probably 30 minutes, 45 minutes, but you're welcome to stay, and we return. Our...